Spring is popping out all over and it's time for spring cleaning. Be sure you don't forget your duck work. Call Premier Heating and Air today and clear the dust, Premier Ducks and keep your unit running smoothly. Through the end of April, receive a free indoor air treatment system with the price of a whole home duck cleaning. And with temperatures heating up, make sure you keep your cool with a $49 AC checkup special. Need a new unit? Get up to $2,000 off qualifying systems. Schedule a visit and get a quote today at premierishere.com. The choice is clear. Choose Premier. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company. Offer ends April 30th.
Welcome to our TV 35 Dublin Lawrence County Chamber 2024 Political Forum. We're going to start our first debate tonight or our forum with District Two, Lawrence County Tax Commissioner, District Two. And with us, we have Mr. Trey Kemp and Mr. Keith Oliver. Gentlemen, we're going to have a two-minute opening statement from each one of you. And then I'll go back and forth with you on a couple of questions and you'll have a two-minute closing statement. Mr. Kemp, since you are our elected current elected official in the District Two Commissioner Office, we're going to start with you. You have two minutes for an opening statement.
So I'm Trey Kemp. I'm the District Two Commissioner. I was born and raised here in Lawrence County. My father's Walton Kemp, a hog farmer just south of Dudley. And my mother is Gail Jolly, a retired teacher from Southwest. After I graduated West Lawrence, I joined the Navy. I served four years there, after which my wife and I, Lori Mullis, moved back to Georgia. We went to Georgia Southern. And after a couple of graduate degrees, I became an educator. And I've taught from corrections to middle school. And I ended my education career working for Hugh Kite as a principal and a CTAE director. For the last several years, I've been in banking. I'm currently the market president of Capital City Bank here in downtown Dublin. The reason I ran for this post in the first place was because I wanted to make Lawrence County better for my kids. I knew that at some point, my children would have to make a decision where they were going to live. And I wanted them to move to Lawrence County if they were somewhere else, or I want them to stay in Lawrence County. I wanted Lawrence County to be such a great place to live, work, and play, that really it was the only choice for them. And so that has been my singular mission ever since I've been elected these past eight years. And I think I have stayed pretty true to that mission. And if I, I hope I've earned your vote and I look forward to your support. May the 21st. Keep Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Oliver, you have two minutes.
First, I would like to thank TV 35 for having this event. I would like to thank Trey for showing up. I'm grateful for this forum so our vision for District Two can be heard. I want to thank my wife, kids, for their support and all my supporters. I married Regina Oliver. She is my middle school sweetheart. We've been married for 36 years this September. We raised two beautiful daughters, Megan and Whitney. We now have two beautiful grandbabies, Hensley and Hagan Johns. I am blessed to have been able to raise a family in this laid-back community of Rock Springs area. My kids got to go to one of the best schools in the state. Go Raiders! I want to represent District Two with a new vision and I would love to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our first question, since we started with Mr. Kemp with the opening statements, Mr. Oliver, I'm going to start with you. What do you feel is the biggest challenge facing District Two and how will you address this challenge?
Well, and you're going to hear this probably a lot, and our infrastructure. Our roads are shambles and we need to do something about them. They're not being maintained the way they should be. The ditches not being done, the pay roads not being done the way they should be done. When they pave a road, they pave over the potholes. Now our whole county is eat up with potholes. Roads has been fixed, you know, and our roads have fallen apart. That's the biggest thing, I think.
Mr. Kemp, what do you feel is the biggest challenge facing District Two and how do you plan to address this issue?
I think the biggest issue facing District Two, and it's not just District Two, I think it's the further you get away from Dublin, is equalization of services. So we currently do not have an ambulance south of I-16. We represent, District Two is about half of Lawrence County by area and we, all the ambulances are north of I-16. This makes calls, when someone calls 911, it makes it so that it takes longer for that ambulance to arrive on the scene. And so if someone in Cedar Grove calls 911, it shouldn't take them, you know, 35 or 45 minutes to receive an ambulance. The same thing is true of motor graders. When I took office in 2016, there was a large reorganization. And as a result, District Two went from six motor graders to four motor graders. And if you look at the numbers, if you look at the math, District Five, which has 120 miles of dirt roads, has four motor graders. District Two with 255 miles of dirt roads has four motor graders. And so it takes time, more time than it should, when there's a large rain or when there's some inclement weather. It takes substantially longer for people to get the services outside and further away from Dublin than I think it should. And so I believe one of the things that we have to do better, and I hope to get this done in the next four years, is have services that are more on parity regardless of where you are in Lawrence County. Whether you're needing a road scraped or whether you call 911, you should have the shortest possible response time possible. And that's something that has to be corrected.
Thank you. I'll start with you for our next question. If elected, what is the, or re-elected in your case, what would be the first thing on your to-do list?
I think the first thing on the to-do list would be to show the other commissioners kind of what the situation looks like in District Two and to continue to push those things. Those are things that I fought for for the last several years. And as a commissioner, you have to work with other folks. You can't just show up and force people to do your will, to do your bidding. Commissioners are not kings. They have to work with a board of four other people. Every single commissioner does. And without that cooperation from the other commissioners, then nothing can get done. And so one of the things that is very valuable to me is to continue to maintain the consensus that we've had on the board. We have an extremely good board right now. To maintain that consensus, but also to sell the board on what we need to look like moving forward from an infrastructure standpoint. We talked about ambulances and motor graders. Those are top priorities and those are things that I would make sure that people saw and the impact that that has on the daily lives of folks that live in District Two.
Mr. Oliver? Yes, sir. If elected, what would be the first thing on your to-do list?
I think some of what he said about, we need EMSs out in the community and different rural, in our rural community. That's one thing that needs to be done. And then we go back to the roads again. He's talking about the roads as a matter, you can't, ain't got time to get from one end to the county other. That's no excuse. Them motor graders, I know some people that's retired now could do, scrape them roads or dig them ditches within two weeks' time. So anyway, they, it goes back, you're going to hear a lot about our infrastructure, our roads. And when a school bus can't go down a dirt road, that's a big problem. So anyway, I'm not no politician, so if y'all looking for some kind of fancy words or what have you, I'm not, I'm not, you're going to get it from me. I'm just going to tell you what I think and that's just the way, I'm sorry.
Spring has sprung and inventory is popping up everywhere at Dublin Chevy GMC. Whether it's a Canyon or an HD Silverado, we have what you're looking for. With rates as low as 2.9 for 72 months, come pick your Silverado or Sierra. Or if you're looking for a full-size SUV, we have a great selection of Yukons and Tahos. Remember to visit mydublinchevrolet.com for all your sales or service needs. Remember, Don sells cars and trucks well only at Dublin Chevy GMC.
I graduated from West Lawrence High School in 1994 and my first love was agriculture. I was not focused on college and never thought about law school. I was focused on farming and driving tractors and being outside, watching crops grow and harvest time. That's where my love was at. I did that for about four or five years after high school. And I knew that I always wanted to have something to do with agriculture, but I needed to get a degree. So I went back to school and to college and I got a four-year degree. I took a job as a probation officer. Now during that four-year, five-year time, I got my CDLs and drove a truck. In fact, I'm probably the only attorney around here that has CDLs and still drives occasionally. But I took that job as a probation officer and I did that for about a year and I decided I wanted to go to law school. I did not fit the cookie-cut mold of what a law school student should be or they think should be. I was not a traditional student. I was a non-traditional student because I was married at the time and I had worked in the workforce. So I went to law school at night, driving three days a week from Lawrence County to Atlanta at night for three and a half years. That's how I got my law degree. I was not born with common knowledge and none of us are. We are not born knowing that fire is hot and ice is cold. We're either taught that or we observe that. Knowledge is gained through events and experience. I told you that my slogan was experience matters, but that does not just go for legal experiences. It goes for real-life experience. I have real-life experience. Our court system needs a judge to bring to the bench real-life experience. A judge that can relate to the common working man or woman. A judge who understands that not every job is nine to five and not everybody just works 40 hours a week. A judge who recognizes that people do live paycheck to paycheck. A judge that will look at all the circumstances and all the facts and consider all of that in the ruling. If you feel the way I feel, I'm asking for your vote for Superior Court Judge of the Dublin Judicial Circuit. Please vote Bradford Childers for judge.
Hey, I'm Glenn Redster with Hometown Supply. Anything they need for us to do, we do. We give warranty with everything. You and you. You can get what we call a tractor style mower that's less expensive than a zero-turn is. You can spend basically half the money and do the same job. Come down and look at what we have, service it, we get parts for it. We can take it down there behind the store. We got a place down there we cut and show them everything about it. Take it out, set it up, do the financing on it, payment where you handle it. You can get whatever you want and just about name your game. It's a one-stop shop.
And remember, if you can't do business here, you just can't do business.
Hello, my name's Mike Robertson. I've decided after prayer and talking to folks, I'm going to try to run for county commissioner. Give it a try. Some of the things I'm interested in is getting back to helping folks. Let's get back into people helping business. I've seen that dwindle down over 40 years. I just retired three years ago with 36 years with the county. So I know about the bills, I know what comes in and where we can help that. And there's just a lot can be done. I will promise this, everybody in District Two, if you need me, I'm right here. I'll be there. I will be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. We will tighten up and we'll know where everything's going. And any big projects that come along, I want the public involved in it. I'm back in the sheriff department, EMS, back in 100%. Believe in public safety. We got to get these roads safe again for everybody. With these new businesses coming into Lawrence County, we've got to work on our infrastructure. We got to get these roads back right again and we got to keep them right. I would appreciate if everybody would go out and vote for me as county commissioner and I'll try not to leave anyone down.
Hello, I'm Jared Mathis, candidate for Lawrence County District Three Commissioner. We're out here at the WH Bud Baron Airport, which is a welcome mat to all business in the Dublin. It's vital that the county commissioners keep the airport in a presentable and working order at all times as we never know who may come in and out. And this is the first impression that they get when they're coming to do business in Dublin and Lawrence County. Also, other items on my agenda is to keep improving public safety. We have great public safety departments and I want to make them even better. Our first responders are second to none and Lawrence County is revered among all surrounding counties as having one of the best group of firefighters, the best sheriff's department and the best EMS department, one of the best of those in the state. And we must keep continuing to improve those type services. One thing I would love to do, our ambulances right now are all currently located in the city and I want to keep those ambulances right there in the city. The city residents have a lot of calls and they need those ambulances, but our ambulances are stretched thin. So we need to add additional ambulances and additional personnel and we need to place strategically some of those units out in the county. I'll work as a county commissioner to secure the funding and make sure we have the pay-in in line with other surrounding agencies to be sure we can make that happen. So perhaps we can get an ambulance to your community. My goal as a Lawrence County Commissioner is not only to just look after District Three, but I want to look after the county as a whole. Because if the county as a whole is successful, District Three will also be successful. I also have plans to get with local developers. Let's see what we can do to bring in more residential construction to Lawrence County. I have been in the construction industry for over 20 years, same as amount of time I've been in the fire department. And I can tell you, residential construction drives business. It creates jobs, it gives subs jobs, it creates people in your restaurants, it brings people in from out of town. People spend money. Construction makes an economy, especially a local economy thrive. We need to get more residential construction in Dublin and Lawrence County so we can help our residents achieve the American dream of homeownership. Please go to the polls on Tuesday, May 21st and cast your ballot for Jared Mathis, District Three County Commissioner. I will certainly appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meg Greer-Evans with Middle Georgia Estate Planning. If you need help with any type of estate planning, whether that's a will, a trust, financial power of attorney, or a healthcare directive, give us a call. We'd be glad to assist you or consult with you and your loved one about long-term care. Our phone number is 478-272-2885, or you can visit our website at middlegeorgiestateplanning.com.
I've always sort of had my rudder pointed at public service. I was very grateful that I had the opportunity and was given the opportunity by our governor, Governor Kemp, to serve in this position. And as I said before, I feel like I'm providing valuable public service to the community and I feel like I'm serving well. I would say that my private practice, which was based here in Dublin and took me to Superior Courts throughout the Dublin Judicial Circuit, some outside the Dublin Judicial Circuit. But being in private practice exposes you to not just criminal cases, not just civil cases, but a good mix of both. I'm confident to say that I've handled pretty much every type of case that comes before a Superior Court Judge. And so that's allowed me, as I said before, to hit the ground running and to really not skip a beat in my transition from being an advocate and a lawyer to sitting on the bench and making decisions on behalf of the people of the Dublin Judicial Circuit. I will also add that I was previously municipal court judge for the city of East Dublin. I did that for about a year and a half. And I have previously served as an administrative hearing officer for the Department of Community Health for the state of Georgia. And so I do have prior judicial experience and I have made decisions. I have analyzed the law and applied it to the facts of the cases that have come before me in the past. So I feel like I have the experience it takes to effectively get this job done. I believe that I have demonstrated that I can capably and competently handle this job and I believe that I deserve to be elected full term as a Superior Court Judge.
I think I'm starting with you this time, Mr. Oliver. What area of the budget needs to be increased and what area of the budget needs to be reduced or reconsidered?
Again, infrastructure. And reduced, I think we need to cut. We spending so much money at Southern Pines and everything else is going lacking. And don't get me wrong, Southern Pine was a fine facility before we spent the $5 million we spent out there. But we need to, we need to spend more time, spend more money in other areas. For example, we got a Bonneclaire boat landing. I would like to see it come back to life. It's something that, it's on my agenda. If I win, it will be done. It can be done. Well, you know, just the taxpayers to get something for their money. I think something else needs to happen in the county. We need to start doing more services for the people by, used to, we would fix driveways for people. We don't do that no more. So we're getting less and less service for our tax dollars. Used to, we'd fix the driveways. Now I think we let the people buy the pipe and the dirt and then the county do the labor for free. That's the service that should be done. And back in another time, we used to, they used to come in for farmers and cows and horses, whatever died, the county would come and bury them for you. They don't have that service anymore. So I think we need to put, give the citizens more service.
Okay. Mr. Kemp?
So as far as a budgetary item I think we should allocate more money for, that's a tough one. I think the board does an extremely good job right now for ad valorem taxes. And it's important to draw the distinction between ad valorem taxes and sploß taxes. And so as far as ad valorem taxes go, I think the county does a pretty good job of allocating those services insofar as they can with the exception of motor graders. Again, I'm going to hit on that again. You know, we need more equipment in the south side of the district. And I think if we allocated some sploß dollars there, that would really, really push us over the edge so that everyone's receiving the same level of services. Another thing that we might want to look at as far as increase in the budget would be to look at where we want to go. And that's something that we haven't done for many, many years. We used to have a meeting between all the major players, all the stakeholders, I think you would call them, whether they were on the Development Authority or whether they were in the city council, we would all come together at someone's camp house and we would decide kind of the direction that Lawrence County needed to go. It's been about, I want to say, seven or eight years, something like that, since we did that. It would be a small expenditure, but it would have huge implications because it would allow us to all be, have all our ships sailing in the same direction. And that's one of the things that we're lacking right now.
Okay, I'll start with you. I think I know what the answer may be here. But for both of you, what do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
So for capital projects, so this is where the distinction has to be made. For basic maintenance and infrastructure, we've hit the nail on the head. We keep beating a dead horse. I think there's not really much difference as far as what we need to spend from a maintenance standpoint. But we need to do a little bit better on investment. So we get, the vast majority of our sploß dollars come from people that live outside of Lawrence County. We don't pay into as much of sploß as other folks do. If you go to Waffle House, if you go to Cracker Barrel by the interstate, if you look at the license plates of the folks that are eating there, they're not from Lawrence County hardly. The vast majority of the folks that are spending this money, that are generating sploß revenue for us are from outside the county. We need to find, continue to find ways to use those sploß dollars to encourage people to come to Lawrence County. One of the things we did at Southern Pines was invest extra sploß dollars. This was sploß dollars that were not attributed, they were not accounted for, and there was no project that was earmarked for it. We use those sploß dollars to help improve Southern Pines. And if you look at what's happened since then, that money has been more than made back up in revenue that's been generated right there at the 441 intersection alone. So that's a really good example. And this goes back to my last point about making sure all of our ships are sailing in the same direction. If we had a unified vision for the things that each of the stakeholders could do, say the Lawrence County and the city of Dublin, the Development Authority and the Rec Authority, and we all come together and see what we can do to increase sploß dollars, that would give us more funding for things like motor graders. That would do more for things like ambulances. And I think that's where we could definitely improve.
Okay. Mr. Oliver, what do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects?
Again, you know, the answer to one of them, the infrastructure. I would like to see, and I know everybody forgets about East Dublin, for more infrastructure being done in East Dublin, like jobs being brought back for the Lawrence County Development Authority. And they were talking about a 2,000-acre site out there. I heard something about that not too long ago. We could, I would love to see that developed. There can be a, for a car dealership, I'm a dealership, you know, build cars or what have you. Something else I would like to see, I would like to see out by Cracker Barrel, that road carry on out. And we could obtain that property that the high school's on that's sitting there, only a few people's in it, develop that for more restaurants and businesses on that end of the county. I would like to see something like that.
Okay. So it seems like we may have some differing opinions, I'm not sure. But I want to know your opinion on Southern Pines, the investment there. Is it the investment that should have been made or would you do things differently? And if you would, what would you do differently?
I'm not going to say I wouldn't invest something, but we can't forget about the citizens in the county. We can't understand, that brings in revenue, I do understand that. But you can't forget about the people that lives here and that drives these roads every day. You can't forget about them. You know, they need to get something for their service and their tax dollars. And our property taxes almost double, mine did, and I'm sure everybody else did. So what I'm getting at is we need to get our tax dollars worth. And I think that we need to put, take care of the citizens. Not saying Southern Pines shouldn't be took care of, don't get me wrong, but we got to look out for our citizens too.
So of the investments made there, would you agree with those investments or would you have invested differently?
I would have invested differently because that was one of the nicest parts in the state of Georgia before we spent the $5 million, in my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Kemp, are you in agreement with the investments at Southern Pines or would you like to have seen some things done differently?
Absolutely. So one of the things that is important to understand is that Southern Pines is not just funded off of ad valorem taxes. So the last, I want to say it was 20, 21 years, the county has contributed the exact same amount to Southern Pines from two decades ago. And that amount of money hasn't gone up. We haven't spent more money from ad valorem taxes, those property taxes that we were just discussing. More property taxes have not gone to Southern Pines, not a dime. Everything that goes to Southern Pines is strictly sploß dollars, which are primarily, again, funded by folks that live outside of Lawrence County. And so it's really a way for us to generate more sploß dollars so that that money is sitting there for things that are necessary. We had excess sploß dollars and in the last eight years I was in office, for example, we were able to make sure the sheriff had resource officers at every single school. That was not something that was here before. It was sploß that did that. Southern Pines was funded by sploß. Southern Pines was not funded by people's ad valorem taxes, their property taxes. It's important that the commissioner understand the difference between sploß dollars and ad valorem taxes. I'm very covetous of ad valorem taxes. Property taxes are something that I think once, twice, three, four times about before allocating that money. Sploß dollars are for investment. And so you have to invest that money. And it's not something that Trey Kemp says, it's something the state of Georgia says that we have to do. We can't put it where they tell us we can't put it. And so it's really important to understand that difference and I think the commissioner should understand the difference.
I'm Carlos Jones and to me, experience matters. And I believe Brad is the man for the job. I met Brad years ago when I started in juvenile probation. He actually trained me and taught me a lot. I watched him, how we worked with the young kids and how it didn't matter who it was he was working with, he was always loving and fair to them. And he would fight for kids in the courtroom. And so I just really believe he's the man for the job, even after me leaving the Department of Juvenile Justice behind him, going into the education field. There's been times I had to call on him just for some advice with things and he was always open to giving me that advice. So I truly strongly support Brad Childers.
Since 1916, Gravely has been designed, engineered, and made right here in the USA. Whether you prefer gas or electric, every Gravely has been forged with the commercial landscaper in it. So they're not only built to last, but to also keep you riding comfortably from dawn to dusk. So ask yourself, are you ready to graduate to a Gravely? Visit your local Gravely dealer today.
Hey, I'm TJ with Dublin Outdoors and Powersports, formerly known as Marge Equipment Supply. We're a full-line dealer for Gravely lawnmower sales and service.
Jared is one of the most loyal and dependable people I know.
Jared was always first and foremost to volunteer, to be assistants or do anything that he could when our youth group would go off.
He's the kind of guy that it doesn't really matter where you're at, he's got a way and a means to get to you.
He's hardworking.
He is a man beyond reproach.
Having someone in the political realm that you can trust and depend on and knowing what I know personally about Jared, that's the sort of elected official I want representing me and taking care of my community.
Elected Jared Mathis, your next commissioner, he will be the person that you need, a person that you can trust.
On behalf of our family, our very active family, we ask that you take your family to the polls, May 21st, to vote. Jared Mathis, District Three, Lawrence County Commissioner.
Spring is in the area. Roach Farm and Garden. Flower beds and garden looking kind of sketchy? Lit a soil test. Need new plants? Roach Farm and Garden just got a huge shipment of ferns. Roach Farm and Garden just got a huge shipment of ferns and tropicals. Looking for Mother's Day gifts? Roach Farm and Garden has you covered. Garden accessories, flags, wind chimes, and more. Time to get those salt licks out for the deer? Roach Farm and Garden carries trophy rocks and 50-pound mineral blocks. Don't forget, Roach Farm and Garden has a full line of deer feed. Looking for some shade? Roach Farm and Garden has you covered. Pecking trees, fruit trees, and ornamentals. And while you're picking up your tree, check out our huge selection of concrete statues. In the need for seed? Roach Farm and Garden carries everything you need for your garden or farm. And as always, Roach Farm and Garden carries feed for just about everything. Have a happy Mother's Day from all of us at Roach Farm and Garden. Two locations, Dublin and Wrightsville.
Hi, I'm Tom Dominy. Here at Dublin Wood Nelson, we pride ourselves on providing the industry's highest-quality products at the most competitive pricing. We are a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. With a staff that collectively offers more than 50 years of expertise, our team knows your industry and we can answer your questions and help you get the parts and equipment you need. From mowing to renovating, we carry the plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products you need from the brands you trust. We also carry a great lineup of Milwaukee tools. At Dublin Wood Nelson, our goal is the long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. If you have a question, or if you're looking for a hard-to-find part, give us a call. Our experts are ready to help. Order online, give us a call, or come by at 507 Airport Road in Dublin. We're committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business
I've always sort of had my rudder pointed at public service. I was very grateful that I had the opportunity and was given the opportunity by our Governor, Governor Kemp, to serve in this position. And as I said before, I feel like I'm providing valuable public service to the community and I feel like I'm serving well. I would say that my private practice, which was based here in Dublin and took me to Superior Courts throughout the Dublin Judicial Circuit, some outside the Dublin Judicial Circuit. But being in private practice exposes you to not just criminal cases, not just civil cases, but a good mix of both. I'm confident to say that I've handled pretty much every type of case that comes before a Superior Court Judge. And so that's allowed me, as I said before, to hit the ground running and to really not skip a beat in my transition from being an advocate and a lawyer to sitting on the bench and making decisions on behalf of the people of the Dublin Judicial Circuit. I will also add that I was previously municipal court judge for the City of East Dublin. I did that for about a year and a half. And I have previously served as an administrative hearing officer for the Department of Community Health for the State of Georgia. And so I do have prior judicial experience and I have made decisions. I have analyzed the law and, and applied it to the facts of the cases that have come before me in the past. So I feel like I have the experience it takes to effectively get this job done. I believe that I have demonstrated that I can capably and competently handle this job and I believe that I deserve to be elected full term as a Superior Court Judge.
Okay. Mr. Kemp, where do you see internet and broadband in Dublin and Lawrence County and do you think we need more investment there?
Well, I don't think that that's necessarily something that the county itself, that's been a really hot topic. People want the county to be the one to lead the charge on rural broadband. The, the reason that I'm opposed to that is because we have a private industry, Southern Fiber Net, who is currently outfitting the east side and the north side with, with fiber and they're laying that every single day. And the state has empowered EMS, I'm sorry EMS, EMCs to do rural broadband as well. And they can put that, that fiber in the ground, they can put that fiber on existing infrastructure. And, and that's really something that is more, that's a utility and that's really something that's best left to utility companies rather than to Lawrence County, who doesn't currently provide any utilities to the citizens. So I, I think right now, we're not in a position, as large as we are, to provide rural fiber to the folks of Lawrence County.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver, how do you feel about infra, or as far as broadband and internet in Lawrence County and what might you do to address that?
I would have to agree with Trey on that. I don't know a whole lot about it, but I would have to agree with him. But I don't think the county should have to pay for any of it, in my opinion. That's my, that's my thought.
Okay. I'll start with you on this one, Mr. Oliver. How do you, or what do you see the role of a County Commissioner? How do you see the role of a County Commissioner involved in public safety of our community?
I think it would need to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars. Need to be able to work along with other Commissioners and, and not let their own personal feelings get in the way. To be able to, to deal with the public and understand where they're coming from, what they're saying, and be able to work with them.
Okay. Mr. Kemp?
I think the role of a County Commissioner is pivotal for everything public safety-related. It's, as I spoke to earlier, it's one of the reasons that I voted for and would vote for, you know, every day of the week and twice on Sunday, making sure that we have school resource officers, for example, at every single school in Lawrence County. I think that's extremely important in the world we live in today. I think that public safety extends beyond just the sheriff's office. I think medical first responders are something that I voted on time and time and time again to give them the, the resources they needed, the salaries they needed to be competitive in this marketplace. And I think that's something that's going to continue to be, I would say, a top priority for the, the Board of Commissioners. I think that's something that, that we've never, we've never disagreed about was the role of public safety. And I, I don't think we've ever disagreed about, you know, as, as one of my colleagues likes to say, it's the most important thing we can do as Commissioners is ensure that when someone calls 911, that everything else after that is smooth. And so I think that's something that is, is vital for the Commission to, to keep doing exactly the same way that we've been doing it.
Okay. And last question is going to be, I want to know your opinion or your beliefs on folks that are in our country, especially here in Lawrence County illegally, about provision of services for those folks.
So as far as it revolves around illegal immigration, the camp, that's a, that's more of a national issue than it is a local issue. But as far as receiving specific services, I don't think that illegal immigrants should receive any services that are, they are not required to have. So the federal government tells the State of Georgia what we have to provide to illegal immigrants. They can get a driver's license and we can't stop them from getting a driver's license. But insofar as we can say no to folks that are in our country illegally, we should. Because the folks that, who, who came to this country legally, the folks that stood in line and did it the right way, should always be given precedence over folks that are here after they've broken the law to get here. And so, you know, I, I think that's a big deal. I don't think that any Commissioner is, is opposed to that way of thinking. I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I don't think the Board would ever, the present Board would ever disagree with the idea of, of retaining anything that we could retain so that illegals would not get those services.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver, how do you feel about providing services for folks here?
They're illegal, so they're, they're not entitled to anything, no benefits whatsoever. They come into this country legal and then they, they entitled to every benefit that they can receive. But I don't agree with them, if they're here illegal, no, they don't get any benefits or any, any, other than maybe go to emergency room and be treated in an emergency. But no, I don't think they should get any benefits whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you. And now, Mr. Oliver, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you, Trey, for being here. I want to work for the citizens of District 2. I would be transparent in anyone's needs. I know I say this like a broken record, but our infrastructure has got to be maintained. Our dirt roads and paved roads are a mess. It seems like to me that the money that's supposed to be spent on these roads are being spent somewhere else, where I don't know. When our public safety and school buses can't get up and down dirt roads, that's a problem. Trey, you see what you're gonna get from Trey? I mean Trey, you, he's already been in there for eight years, you see what you're gonna get. I feel like Trey's done forgot about the taxpayers. I think our, and I think our meal rate could be dropped some more, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp?
I'll go ahead and say that I appreciate Mr. Oliver for being here tonight. I think there are two very clear paths forward for Lawrence County. And I think those paths are, are very different and I think that's a good thing for the voters of District 2, because they get to decide on which of these paths they would, they would prefer to go. I have always tried to be strong, but not a bully. I have always tried to be knowledgeable, but not a one-trick pony. And so with that being said, I think it's important for a Commissioner to understand all facets of the job. It's important for a Commissioner to not just do one thing well, it's imperative that a Commissioner do as many different parts of his job well as they possibly can. That involves working with other people, that involves working with an array of different parts of the government. The Commissioner needs to be able to talk efficiently to judges and they need to be able to talk efficiently to farmers in their field. And I think that's something that I, I bring to the table. I think there's, you would be hard-pressed to find a situation that I can operate in. And, and so I, I have appreciated my time these last eight years as a Commissioner and I asked humbly for your vote, May the 21st. Keep Kemp.